I will open our school committee meeting for May 15th. It's a joint meeting with Millville Board of Selectmen and some DEP representatives. If we could stand for the pledge, and then we'll do some introductions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. All right. Thank you so much, everyone, for being here. We definitely have a lot of information to cover, but it has taken us all some time to be able to get together in a room, so just be patient with us so we can get through everything and hopefully come to some solutions by the end of tonight for the future of the water at Millville Elementary School. So we're going to start with introductions, and I think-
I take our meeting out of recess.
Sure.
I motion to take our board of selectmen meeting out of recess.
So who?
For a second?
Say go.
All right, everyone this way. A discussion, seeing now how it called for the vote. Richard?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Roland?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
All right, so I think it's going to be easiest if we just go around the table, and I'll start. Erin Vinoco, the Chair of the Blackstone-Millville School Committee.
State Representative Mike Soder, represent the town of Millville, Blackstone, Bellingham, Uxbridge, and Medway. Did I forget anyone?
Chuck Dunton, Blackstone-Millville, Blackstone Board of School Committee member.
Tara Scobie, representative for Blackstone School Committee.
Matt Catalano, Millville School Committee representative.
Bob Ostwick, Mass DEP Drinking Water Section Chief.
Mary Chute-Piglesley, I'm the Regional Director of the Mass DEP office in Worcester.
Bob Ferrari, President of Northeast Water Solutions.
Hi, I'm Kylie Gibbons. I'm District Director for State Senator Ryan Fatman. He's sorry he can't be here tonight, but he's at a separate meeting, so you get me instead.
Richard Brumbles, Millville Selectmen.
Matt Maile, Millville Selectmen.
Roland Barrett, Millville Selectmen.
Andrew Alworth, Millville Selectmen.
Jennifer Yell, Millville Selectmen Chair.
Peter Caruso, Millville Town Administrator.
Dr. Rich Gulick, I work for Water Compliance Solutions. I'm a water quality consultant for the town of Millville.
Scott Heebert, Director of Facilities.
Christina Schaefer, Principal of Millville Elementary.
Ted Millville, Millville Representative of School Committee.
Harry Goddett, Blackstone Representative of School Committee.
Dan Keefe, Blackstone Representative of School Committee.
Denise Carey, District Director of Finance and Operations.
Jill Pille Galerani, Director of Labor Support Services.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Thank you so much. Like I said, there are a lot of us, and it took a lot to get us here, so I appreciate your time, and we definitely need to use this time wisely. And again, our purpose is to work through the water issues and hopefully come to a solution and know where we're going from here. I'll start with owning the fact that we did have water, the water conversation at our last meeting, and it happened because there was a rapid email exchange between Town Administrator, Superintendent, Water Consultants, Water Company, and I was copied and some of them, forwarded some of them as the Chair of the School Committee. There were eight of us, and for me, it became an overwhelming moment where I was like, no one else on our committee knows that this issue is even here. So in respect of the open meeting law, I said to the Superintendent, we need to put this on our agenda. It needs to be discussed publicly, and then that's basically what happened. We usually set the agenda two days before. I realized there wasn't a lot of time for people to fit it into their schedules, but for us, it was time of the, time was of the essence to get that communicated to the rest of the committee. So there was no ill intent with that, more than just being able to make sure the communication was the same to everybody. With that being said, Bob had joined us two weeks ago, and I won't lie, I feel it was a very grave delivery, the way that that started with you, Bob, and comparing the water issues to Flint, Michigan. Definitely didn't expect that opener, even seeing the emails that I had seen. So I know you have a lot of information to share. I have seen a lot of other information from Dr. Gulick, and I want everyone to be on the same page tonight with what that information is. So with that being said, what I would like to do is ask if you can share with us, because you've been the longstanding water operator of that building, and then I think our conversation can go from there. And what I'm going to say about that is, I know we spent hours the other night, and we definitely all need to be on the same page. I know you said you hadn't sat with the Board of Selectmen, so-
I think we all watched the meeting, Mel.
Okay.
I know that I did.
Perfect.
Everyone watched the meeting?
So if you want to give us, you know, a short recap of that, and then anyone else that wants to present, I'll give that same amount of time to, just to keep us moving forward with the conversation.
Sure, I appreciate it. Just a little small point clarification. We've been performing engineering services since December 2005 to present. We've been the system certified operators since December 1st, 2013. Okay? Just to be clear on that. Water supply in Millville goes back decades. Water supply for this school was developed initially in 1990. There was a lot of work done by other folks. The wells, the site is fairly unique. That uniqueness, it takes an understanding of the site investigations and geology and hydrogeology and geochemistry to have a good understanding of it. I'm not going to bore you all with the details right now. If somebody wants to know more, I'd be glad to have a separate meeting to give you a dissertation. But you have a well, you have one well. The well has always had elevated iron. There's reasons why it didn't make itself known, apparently, until probably like the 2007, '08, '09 time period, but there's reasons for it. It was always there. The well has always been sensitive to weather conditions. There's almost no soil cover over the well, over the bedrock. Where that well is, you've got two and a half feet of overburdened material. That's mostly organic degradation product from vegetation. The well is very susceptible to infiltration of water from the surface or coursing through the thin soil layer. We've done a lot of work on the well. We've got video inspections of it. We know exactly where the fractures are, and this has always made the water very difficult to treat. When you add in the school's operation, the school operates during the school year five days a week. That water system years ago was probably operating for maybe an hour or two a day. Now it's operating longer because we're using a lot more water to backwash the filters. We're using more water to backwash the filters than is being used in the school, and it's not being used for drinking water purposes right now. It's being used, I believe, for flushing toilets and applications like that. The green sand filtration system was designed in 2010 in response to a failure of the well. The well, which at the time was 455 feet deep, was choked from bottom to top with precipitated iron and some manganese. The riser pipe was completely fouled. The pump was completely fouled. The point stalled. The transmission main coming into the school was fouled. At the time, there was a 60,000 gallon storage tank. It's still out there. It was a combination fire protection and drinking water tank. Coming out, the water would come from the well into the school and through the mechanical room. It would tie into an eight-inch pipe and go right back out again, a side stream, connection to the distribution pumps. It went through an eight-inch pipe, which expanded to a 12-inch pipe, went to the rear of the school, to the 60,000 gallon tank. That pipe was reduced in size to about three inches in diameter because of the accumulation of iron in it. Again, there's all kinds of evidence and documentation of this. We designed this green sand filtration system in 2010. We've previously done other work, other treatment for corrosion control. System went online, started up, performed beautifully. We were involved for about six months, and then the training wheels were taken off, and the then-operator ran the system. Our involvement was pretty much nonexistent until, except by a few phone calls, until I got a phone call from the town in August 2013, panic-stricken. The well water and the water in the school was loaded with low organic contaminants, and the green sand filtration system had not been operating correctly for over a year. Elevated iron and manganese coming through. Got involved, evaluated it. Won't go into the bloody details, but needless to say, the principal issue was it was being operated incorrectly, and the school had gone wildly off course with some very bad recommendations from others. We were hired on December 1st. We're back in compliance an hour later. Compliance was maintained. We refurbished and revetted the system in March of 2014. From March 2014 until early 2020, you had an overall very good compliance record from the standpoint of the effluent quality coming out of the green sand filters. Eighty-eight or eighty-nine analyses indicated only a small number, a handful, had detectable iron and detectable manganese, and a lesser number exceeded the secondary limits. We began, we did have in that period of time, a couple of occasions when we had elevated disinfection byproducts. That's always been a problem. Historically, we would see total organic carbon on the order of three or four milligrams per liter. Some fraction of that, that organic carbon, which is an indirect indicator of natural organic matter, was reacting with chlorine. That's our pre-oxidant chemistry used for the green sand, and some, we had levels of disinfection byproducts forming. That's not unusual in chlorination. We had a couple of occasions when we had, we exceeded the limits and had to do evaluations and deal with it, and efforts were made to reduce the chlorine residual in the water following the green sand filtration process, because that seemed to be the best way to control it. Starting in approximately April of 2020, the system began to go out of control, and the reality of life is that for three years now, we've had extreme problems maintaining a sustained level of performance of the green sand filters. The one big difference is that sometime during the late winter, or late, late in the 2019 or 2020, Beaver Dam was created. This ultimately resulted in the impoundment behind the Beaver Dam, which extends, slowly extended in the direction of the well. As of a measurement I took on May 5th, the surface water, the edge of the surface water is 32 feet from the wellhead. We measured it another time about a year ago. It was approximately 35 feet at the time. Total organic carbon has skyrocketed. We saw a progression of increasing TOC through 2020. It's been sustaining typically between nine and 16 milligrams per liter of total organic carbon, with typically about 60% of that, give or take, is dissolved organic carbon. We've seen, we've had severe problems with getting a consistent oxidant, oxidation of iron and manganese. We are getting elevated disinfection byproducts. We have a difference of opinion with the town relative to, we've been advocating to eliminate the Beaver Dam. Based upon a, you know, my, about my 10th inspection over the last three years, the Beaver Dam is blocking a culvert that goes underneath the access road to the wellhead. There's a small trickle of water coming through that culvert. It's a concrete culvert that was put in specifically to maintain drainage through that area, and it's very, and I actually took photographs of it, again, to document it. In any event, we believe that there's a number of problems associated with this. There's no one problem here. There's a range of issues. Number one, your characterization is highly variable. You have extremely variable iron and manganese. Over the last, since 2014, we've seen iron in the raw well water ranging from about six milligrams per liter to 42. We've seen manganese from about .7 up until about 1.5. That's a lot of manganese, even though it sounds like it's a much smaller number than the iron. As I've mentioned, we've seen wildly variable organic carbon in the water. So that in and of itself makes it very difficult. When you combine that with, we have a lot of other reactions occurring, either in the well and/or the transmission main. We're forming some small particulate or colloidal material. It varies. That material will go through a green sand filter. It will basically go through any media filter. We have the issue of the school operation, which makes it very difficult to operate a system. Now, we figured out how to operate it and operate it fairly successfully, but when you're only operating a system, you know, maybe three hours a day, five days a week, when you have long weekends when you're shut off, when you have holidays and vacation periods, when you're shut off for a week or 10 days, or you have your summer when you're, when you have minimal water use for an extended period of time, makes it very difficult, and you have to be, stay on top of that, and we've implemented a lot of operating procedures and protocols to deal with it. It seemed to work successfully for a while. So now we're in a situation where it was decided, and I was involved in the decision, and I actually concurred with the decision, that we should switch to permanganate to eliminate the green sand filtration issue, but the problem is we, I prepared a memo about a month ago, and we consulted with the technical folks at Inbersand. They're the manufacturer of green sand, and the conclusion was that the organic carbon was going to be a big issue. The issue is that it's an oxidant demand, and it's variable, and that is going to create headaches. Now, the good news is theoretically you eliminate your disinfection byproducts problem. The disadvantage is that the water coming out, if you have too much of an excess of permanganate, you're going to have water that ranges in color from pink to purple. Okay? And not too many people want to drink that either. So we have to deal with this issue. I basically reiterated my recommendation to eliminate the Beaver Dam, and that would help, over time, help, help us eliminate, in my opinion, a lot of the organic carbon in the water. Now, we can get into, are we getting pushback that, how do I know the carbons coming from the beaver pond, et cetera? I'll be more than happy to provide a very substantial technical report that I think substantially documents it. Okay? Beyond that, I'm going to go back to 2010 for a few minutes. The issue came up then, should the school, and should the town, look for a new well? What I will tell you is, as far back as I think 1984, thereabouts, a study was done in Uxbridge and Millville and Blackstone, looking for, actually townwide water supplies, and they looked at 22 sites, and most of them were determined to be not viable because of the type of soils. Millville has the incredibly bad luck of, you've got the Blackstone River going through Millville, and most of the Blackstone River basin and tributaries are cut through sand and gravel, except if you, I just drove over the Blackstone River on the way here tonight. If you look over the side of the bridge, you're going to see bedrock, instead of a nice, nice broad-based sand and gravel deposits, which is what you want for sand and gravel wells that are high-yielding wells. So unfortunately, there was limited options. A lot of studies were done at the site, and this well was identified as the, at the time, the optimum location. We looked at the balance of the site and compared it to information from other studies done, as I said, from the 1980s through the early 1990s, and then our own work in 2010, and laid out options for the town. And at the time, it was concluded that because of the probability that you'd still have elevated iron and manganese, for lack of a better phrase, to deal with the devil you know and the one that you don't know. That's how the decision was made. Of course, we did not have severely elevated TOC at the time either, so, and we weren't worried about things like PFAS and other contaminants that come to the fore. So that's my summation. My opinions and my recommendations have not changed, and I won't have to yield the floor to somebody else.
So your recommendation as of today is, is, can you adapt that?
Well, it's, you have two choices. Either attempt to eliminate the beaver pond and, or service water impoundment, and get back to some level of former conditions, or try to drill in the well. You've got two choices here, folks. I'll tell you what you can't do. You can't stay where you are. That's what you can't do. I'll tell you that right now.
So the, the other system that we were, we thought we were moving to, you're not recommending that?
No, it's not that I'm not recommending that. I think you have, you have an issue to resolve. It's difficult enough to treat significantly elevated iron and manganese in the water, without compounding the process with this additional issue, which we're not worried about organic carbon, say severely complexing iron and manganese. There's a little issue, I think, with some iron complexing, but it's not a severe issue. The problem is, it's a highly variable load. You can see that from the data, and it creates an additional oxidant chemistry demand. The problem is, is that that demand, and I'll show you some pictures, can vary from hour to hour, let alone day to day or week to week. It's impacted by precipitation and snowmelt. It's impacted by what may be happening on the ground at a given point in time. It's impacted by the use rate in the school. There's a lot of variables in there, folks, and you, and they're all, the iron, the manganese, the water use, the organic carbon, it's all highly variable. And I would tell you right now, you know, it's, when, I know Bob Bossigal may remember this, when they put the school on, we were coming in one day a week, and we have remote monitoring on the system, and Mass DEP came back, and this is, you know, roughly two and a half years ago, and said, we want you to go to three days a week. And I argued with it, and I made the case, and I thought, within context of regulations, it was a good case to not have to go to three days a week, but I'm going to point now, telling you, that you need five days a week right now. And I don't want to go to five days a week, and I won't do it, but I'm just telling you, that's how variable what we're experiencing. And in fact, I will, I will send some handouts around, one handout. It's some nice pictures, okay? Bear with me for a moment.
Getting that ready. Are there any questions, just on the history?
I've got 10 copies.
Recommendation of where we are now?
Give up the show.
Sure.
So, you know, this is, this is an issue that seems to be growing, and as I came in, it was sitting here, and it's been an ongoing problem. You know, no one likes to walk into the school and see their faucets, you know, wrapped up, and their kids not able to have drinking water and whatnot. I think we, we have some very valuable assets here today to speak to us tonight about solutions to the problem. I'm one of these folks that I think we've been around and around, between the engineers that are here in the room, between the town, and between the operating engineers. I think at this point would be a good time for us to kind of jump over to DEP if we could, because we, it's not, it's very rare that we get the Regional Director to come, you know, and this is how important it is to them, important to, it is to myself and Senator Fatman, and we will, I think it would be a good opportunity, if you wouldn't mind, Madam Chair, if we could jump over to DEP to kind of discuss where we go from here, if that's possible.
I just, that is definitely the direction I was going.
It's been suggested to us.
As long as there wasn't anyone that needed some clarification on, on any part of what was just presented.
Just one, this photograph I sent around. These were eight samples taken over a one-hour period on a morning of May 5th. Okay? Sean Murphy, our lead operator, and myself went in the school relatively early. After we inspected the well, we came back, and we have a blow-off at the mechanical room.
Were they different faucets or different?
No, this was from the same location. This is before. This is actually at, right at the point of entry into the mechanical room.
Okay.
Just looking at this visually. That's the range we got in an hour, folks. Okay? You can take it from there.
Madam Chair, if I could just ask one question. It may lead into the DEP. The DEP has guidance to, in 2012, a threat to water supplies due to beavers and muskrats. The professional here has laid that out. I guess the question is, why hasn't it been addressed?
And that's from 2012?
Well, it's guidance from the DEP.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And we fit the criteria based on what the DEP calls out for that. So I'm curious if this doesn't fit that criteria, or just why has it not been addressed at all?
Are you familiar with what criteria he's speaking of, or, okay. So I just want to, I was about to say that Bob was probably the only one at the table that has been with the water as long as he has, but I'm getting the sense that also-
Another Bob.
Another Bob.
How long have you been part of the Millville water? If you could just give us a little history on your-
Um, I've been with DEP for almost 35 years.
Okay.
I've been in the drinking water program since 2006.
So have you been watching this process?
I oversee, right now, I'm the Section Chief. I oversee over 400 water systems. So I'm, I've been aware, obviously, Bob and I met years ago, so I've been aware of the water, water situation out at Millville Elementary for quite some time.
Okay. I appreciate that history, too. So, yes, definitely, as Mike has requested to turn over to DEP, I would agree with that, and we definitely appreciate your time tonight.
Sure.
Yep.
We're really happy to be here, and I appreciate the invitation and some conversations I've had with, with people. There have been many conversations between Bob and his staff over the years. Our Deputy Regional Director for the water programs, which includes drinking water and wetlands and wastewater and other things, couldn't be here tonight, but she's had a lot of conversations over the years with people. Marielle Stone. This is not the last conversation we'll be having with the town about the water, so Marielle will be joining us when she can. I apologize in advance, because to talk about this stuff requires acronyms and also requires math, so I try really hard to not get into the alphabet soup. Sometimes, sometimes I do, and just, you know, stop me, and I'll, I'll try to speak more English than alphabet, but I want to cover two things, and then pick up on a couple of this Bob's points with which I disagree. Let me just start out by saying, this is not Flint, and anybody who tries to compare something to Flint is fear-mongering, and it's not helpful. But I'll start there. So I want to cover what a public water system is, and why the town is being regulated by DEP, and what that all means. Then we're going to talk about the disinfection byproducts problem, and a second problem, which is more significant, which is called PFAS, and I'll get to describing that. It is something that you may have seen in the press. There's actually a movie on Netflix about PFAS called The Devil You Know. So when you said The Devil You Know is better than, that was DuPont's answer to the question of why they didn't phase out these terrible chemicals. So it was pretty, it was a funny choice of words there. So a public water system is any system that is providing water to 25 or more people a day, 60 or more days a year. So it's not that it's a municipal system. It could be privately owned, it could be municipally owned, it just has to serve 25 or more people every day. The standards for public water systems throughout the country come from the federal government, from EPA. We are a delegated state by EPA to implement those federal rules. We can be more strict than EPA, but we can't be less strict than EPA. So the drinking water rules in general, in general, come from EPA, including disinfection byproducts rules and the PFAS rules that I'm going to talk about. PFAS rules aren't here yet, so that's going to be a more complicated discussion. And I have to say, everything we're talking about tonight is complicated, so you're not missing anything. It's, it's just, there's a lot going on here. As Bob said, we have more than 400 public water- As Bob said, we have more than 400 public water systems in the region. We serve 77 cities and towns, and we have 420-some water systems throughout those. Many of those are schools, and people do routinely operate systems at schools. Millville has some of the worst water quality Bob and his staff have ever seen. So, not, not to pick on the town, it's all naturally occurring. It's not, it's not any dumping that happened or anything like that. It's just a quirk of geography in this part of the state. We tend to have high arsenic. There's an arsenic belt that runs through here, there's radon, I mean, just this part of the state, we have some challenging water, some challenging systems to operate. So, Bob's absolutely right. This is, this is a, this is a tough nut to crack in, in this situation. So, I'm not going to get lost in the details. I think the consultants that the town has, the operator and the consultant can, can give you blinder's worth of information. I'll tell you what I think you need to know to talk about these difficult, these difficult conversations the town needs to have. The well is over 1,000 feet deep. We don't agree, based on testing that the town done, is that it's very susceptible to infiltration from the surface, as Bob said. The TOC, the total organic carbon, the first record we have in our files was from February 8th of 2013, where one of the other consultants from the town called it, quote unquote, exceptionally high. So, it was nine, what are the units?
Milligrams per liter.
Milligrams per liter in 2013. So, it may have been varying from, you know, eight to 11 to nine, but this is not a recent problem. This is not a problem since 2020. This is a problem for 10 years. The town has been dealing or not dealing with this for a really long time. And again, it's complicated, and it costs money, and Millville is a small town, and these are super difficult things for towns to grapple with. So, as Bob was saying, the iron and manganese, the stuff that, you know, the brown water, had the green sand filtration installed back in 2010, I think Bob said. And that has to be regenerated over time, and it has to be, for lack of a better word, like jumpstart. It needs like pre-treatment. And you can pre-treat the green sand filtration with chlorine or with this potassium permanganate. Because of this high total organic carbon in the water, when you mix that with chlorine, which is what has been being used to prime the pump there, these disinfection byproducts form. It's a little bit confusing, because most of the time, when we're talking about disinfection byproducts, we're talking about chlorine being added to disinfect water from a surface water system. You tend to see this total organic carbon being high in a surface water system, because you've got all the stuff on the top of the water, and it comes down. This well's 1,000 feet deep.
Can I just ask one question, clarifying question?
Sure. And I'm sorry, I talk fast.
1,000 feet deep. Where does the water pump from?
What's, where's it screened?
On, on a well that's that deep.
The principal water bearing fracture, there's two of them, or two zones in the well. The principal fracture is a, the first one, original one, was 142 feet down. There are probably, I don't know, six or eight smaller fractures above it. We had, we drilled down to 1,000 and we had--
But we're not pumping from 1,000 feet?
Water enters, as you pump water out of the well, water will enter the well through the fractures. It can, went to the well from all of the fractures, okay? Every well is unique. We have this, there's a fracture zone below 800 feet, and there's, there's a fracture zone around 140, 142 feet down, okay? Water doesn't come in from just one fracture.
I understand that. But my question is, is the water that's being pumped out to, to our tank, is at what level?
She's asking, what level is the pump set at?
The pump is set in the well at, if I recall correctly, I believe in the vicinity, at 250 feet down. I could be a little off on that, but it's in that vicinity.
So, essentially, though, the water at 1,000 feet may or may not ever be used?
No, the water, no, the water is entering the well, and it will ultimately get pumped as it enters the well, yeah.
It could come in from every different fracture.
I know, the water coming in, but I'm saying, the water coming out into the building is coming from the well pump.
The, the water is coming from the well pump. As you, as you pump a well down, water comes in through, you're reducing the static head in the well, and water flows in from the fractures. Which fractures are providing more or less water? I, I don't think you want to go there on what that study would cost you, okay? Water will come in through all of the fractures unless a fracture gets blinded off, okay? The fact, it will.
But should we find comfort in knowing that--
It's not on you, it's very routine that water enters a well from fractures that are underneath the well pump, below the well pump in the well, okay?
Right. But Mary Jude, you were pointing out that it's 1,000 feet. So, should there be comfort in knowing that our water's coming from that depth, or are we coming from higher, like to get away from?
I don't think, I don't think which fractures are drawing the water in is, is significant. I think the issue is, we're going to talk about, if we have to talk about the Beaver Dam, but I don't really want to talk about the Beaver Dam. If we have to talk about the Beaver Dam, the fact that the water is coming from fractures in the bedrock, not from surface runoff, because there have been tests done to substantiate that. And to this gentleman's question about the Beaver Dam removal policy, one of the several things that you would fill out in that application is evidence that it is surface infiltration and a bunch of other things, but I really don't want to talk about the Beaver Dam. If we have to, I will. I certainly want to address everybody's questions. I think they're much more important and timely questions to talk about than the Beaver Dam. So, the disinfective byproducts are being, that's what they're called, disinfection byproducts, as chlorine is used for disinfection, but I don't want anybody to get confused that the chlorine is being used for disinfection. It certainly has a side effect of killing bacteria. So, when these disinfection byproducts form, they are harmful to human health at levels that exceed the EPA standards that have been set by the federal government. These standards have been exceeded many, many, many times in this water system. There are sensitive subpopulations to water that contains these chemicals, which are pregnant women and women of childbearing age. So, when DEP or EPA look at certain water quality standards, there's a typical formula, which is an average weight person drinks two liters of water from the same source every day for 70 years, and will they get cancer? That's an issue here. These chemicals are suspected by EPA of causing cancer, liver cancer, kidney cancer, but their sensitive populations can have adverse effects in much shorter period of times. So, you have to keep in mind that it's not just a lifetime risk of exposure that you're talking about. It's a public health issue for short-term exposure to sensitive groups. You tend to have more women of childbearing age in an environment like an elementary school. So, I feel like in a lot of these conversations, some of the emails I've seen back and forth, the critical information of, "This is a public health question, not a science experiment", has been getting lost. And I really want to underscore that for the town. This is public health information. It's public health information that we have required under the law to be distributed through these public notices, that every time there's a violation, this public notice has to be distributed to all the people who drink the water. And there seems to me to be a little disconnect between the town with the legal requirement to send out these public notices, and the people signing off that they went out being the school principal, because you're accomplishing that through email. So, there's been sort of a little bit of a merging of responsibilities that I'm not happy to see, and I don't want to see these things being signed by the school anymore. They need to be signed by the town. So, that's something, that's just a thing going forward when we talk about who's going to be doing what. That responsibility belongs to the town to get information from the school principal saying, "I did this on this date," because this has to be signed by an official from the town. So, here's the math. To figure out if you're in compliance with these drinking water standards for the disinfection byproducts, it's an annual, are there any math teachers? Because this would be great. An annual running average based on quarterly sampling. So, every three months, you take your sample, and you go back and pick up the previous three months, and you add them, and you divide by four, and you get your number. So, it's constantly rolling. And to Bob's point about variations, when you're doing a running annual average, that has an effect. It's not just sort of month, 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 month. You're adding these, these numbers, and the top one drops off, and the next one comes in. So, the numbers, the numbers can change. But in all, the, the period from October 18th to September 19th, you're out of compliance every quarter, every quarter. You're out of compliance in quarter two and quarter three of 2022. You're out of compliance from quarter one of 2023. So, this is, this is not, this is an ongoing repeat public health problem. So, every exceedance has to have the public notice. It has language in here that says, "Pregnant women and women of childbearing age may be at increased risk and should seek advice from their healthcare provider. Some people who drink water containing halocetic acids in excess of the drinking water standard over many years may have an increased risk of getting cancer." This is language that DEP requires go out, so that people can make informed choices about whether to drink the water. And the representative's point is, is great. It's, it's a terrible thing to walk through the school and see the plastic covers on the babblers. But you can't drink the water when it's exceeding that. That's something that DEP is, is saying.
Can we do the chemical that was listed, halocetic acid?
Halocetic acids, HA, and there are fi, it's like, it's a class of, of disinfection byproducts, and DEP, EPA regulates five of those. So, in some of the reports, you may see HAA5, and that's, that's what these are.
And is that from the chlorine?
Yeah. Well, it's the chlorine mixing with that total organic carbon. The chlorine by itself is not the problem. It's when it mixes with the poor water quality. So, in October, we issued a notice of noncompliance to the town, saying, "We need a corrective action plan. This has gone on long enough. We can't just keep having, you know, send this by email, send this by email, send this by email, send this by email." I mean, it's too much. So, we wanted an action plan. We got the action plan, and the proposal that the town came forward with was to switch that priming the pump thing, because I'm forgetting the actual word, the oxidizing chemical, from the chlorine to the potassium permanganate, that that would be the thing to do. And we were told that there had been a design of a, of a treatment change, which we would have to approve, Bob and his staff, and that a permit application was prepared, and we would be getting it in May. We don't have it yet. I'm not sure from conversations I've had that we're ever going to get it. We would review that permit application, and we would issue a permit if we had an application, but we don't. So, that's problem number one.
So, can I just ask why you don't think you're going to get it? Is there a conversation about that?
I think what Bob was talking about in terms of the difficulty, and just yet another difficulty managing this system, is that the levels of the total organic are so high that the manufacturer of the permanganate system is saying it won't be effective. It will, you'll, you'll be using so much permanganate, it's going to turn the water pink. It's, it's, it's a color problem. It's not, it's, you're not going to get one of these because the water's pink, but people, you know, aren't going to want to drink pink water. So, I think, well, my understanding is, and not to speak for, for other people, was that because of this problem, that you can't get the manufacturer to guarantee this thing is going to work, I think there's some reluctance on the part of the town to go forward with something that, that might not work.
Okay.
The Beaver Dam might not work either.
And I think Jen had a question.
Yeah, so, actually, I have a question, and I may defer to Dr. Gulick, because he did contact the manufacturer, spoke with him today. And so, Mr. Raymond Jones from Iverson Company advised by 15, so this is hot off the presses, that based on his experience of the current corals moving the iron sword permanganate, the TOC is a complicating factor. Need more oxygen to satisfy the extra on demand, but, so there's a lot of stuff here, but he seemed to indicate that it would be.
You can, you can, well, can I just keep going? Because I think, the plot, the plot twist is coming.
Okay.
So, PFAS, per and polyfluoroalkyl substances, and I'm not going to say that, I'm going to say PFAS.
You've gotten very good at it over the last couple of years.
So, per and polyfluoroalkyl substances are things that are found in man-made articles. They're man-made chemicals. They were structured, they came to be in the, in the 40s, late 40s, early 50s, DuPont, Teflon. They are things that are extremely water resistant, grease resistant, used in firefighting foam. They are, if you want to do chemistry stuff, they are, if there's any chemistry teachers, carbon fluorine bonds, which are extremely difficult, perhaps impossible to break, except at incineration of really, really high temperatures. But because they're grease proof and waterproof and all these things, they're eating everything. Every person in this room has PFAS in their blood. 98% of the people in the world have PFAS in their blood. It is in microwave popcorn bags, waterproofing on your carpet or your furniture or your boots, waterproof mascara, firefighting foam, certain kinds of firefighting foam. It is in everything, and it has been used everywhere, which is why it's so ubiquitous. Every five or six years, EPA, which sets all the rules, tells the water supplies all across the country, "Go look for some of these things." It's called the Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Rule. So, things that aren't regulated, EPA wants us to go look for, gather data, and say, "Should we regulate these things?" So, in one of the rounds of the Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Rule, they had states, water suppliers, look for some of these PFAS compounds, two of them. And they found it everywhere in high levels. EPA did not set a standard at that point in time. EPA issued a health advisory, which is a non-enforceable number, that just, it gives an idea of people, to people of the risk. And for two of these compounds, and again, I'm sorry I have to do this, but PFOA and PFAS, PFOA and PFOS, the combination of those two should not be more than 70 parts per trillion. A part per trillion is one grain of sand in the size of an Olympic swimming pool. So, it's those two combined, 70 parts per trillion. Our scientists, in our office research and standards in Boston, was looking at all of this data from all around the world about health risks and the persistence of these things in the environment because they don't break down. We came up with different math from EPA, and because we can be more strict, we are more strict. And in October of 2020, we issued a drinking water standard that is enforceable of 20 parts per trillion for six of these PFAS chemicals combined, PFOA, PFAS, or four other ones. So, 16 states, including Massachusetts, have acted so far to regulate PFAS, but the rest of the country has not. More math. The way we get to our standard for measuring PFAS in drinking water, there are six of them that we add up together. The total can't be more than 20 parts per trillion, also an average, but this one is a monthly average, a quarterly average of monthly samples. So, you take a sample of PFAS every month, and then you divide it per quarter. So, the quarterly result can't be more than 20 parts per trillion for the six Massachusetts ones combined. You're not out of compliance with the PFAS standard. Because of the averaging, the, the highest number for the last 15 months since, this is, this is new. I mean, 15 months is pretty new in government time. You only have 15 months of sampling because the rule is new, and nobody was sampling for PFAS before 2021. So, the 15 months of sampling, none of the number, none of the 20 added together, your PFAS six number, none was below 10, which is not so good. The highest was 19.6. So, when you do that three months, three months, three months chunks, because you get to average, you have not exceeded 20, but if I had a 19.5, that would make me nervous. So, I had a conversation with some people last week where actually, the question came up, "Could you do less monitoring?" And the answer was, "No, you cannot do less PFAS monitoring. That's not a good thing to ask," and the answer is, "No." So, you're sitting there, you're like in the teens, 13, I think I did the math, 13.1 is your average over those 15 months, and the standard is 20. So, you've got seven grains of sand as your buffer here. But we wrote into our rule that we would re-look at the science every three years. So, we are right now undergoing that three-year review from 2020, and I can tell you that the number is going to go down. I don't know what it's going to be. I know the number is going to go down, because in March, two months ago, EPA finally decided to act. And EPA has proposed a federal drinking water standard for the two, the PFOA and the PFAS, of four parts per trillion each. Your average number for PFOA, your lowest number in the 15 months is eight. Your lowest number is twice the standard that the federal government is going to require. Your highest number was 12.2 for PFOA. They're also adding four other ones, of course, not the same four that we have, just because that would be too easy. And there's all different math that's involved with those other four that I'm not going to do, because you don't have those. EPA expects to issue that federal standard by the end of the year. EPA never does anything when they say they're going to, but this is a huge national issue. EPA never does anything when they say they're going to, but this is a huge national issue, and they are going to act, probably not by the end of the year. Why is it a huge national issue? Because as I was talking about the disinfection byproducts, there is this 70-year cancer risk, testicular cancer, kidney cancer, I can't remember the other ones, associated with exposure to PFAS. But the sensitive subpopulations for PFAS are pregnant women, nursing mothers, nursing mothers, and immune compromised people. And the exposure period, being at risk from consuming PFAS in drinking water is a matter of months, not years. So PFAS is being regulated at the grain of sand level because of the significance of the public health risk presented by these chemicals that are everywhere and persist and can't be gotten rid of. So it's a significant national, and in fact, international problem. So why am I telling you this when you're in compliance? Number one, it's coming, and it's coming at the end of the year. Number two, it's more expensive than your disinfection byproducts problem to fix. Number three, I never get to say this, we may have money for you. So EPA is giving the states unbelievable amounts of money to deal with PFAS across the country. It is a generational thing, that people like Bob and myself, who've been doing this for 35 years, that there has never been money like this coming from the federal government before. Specifically for PFAS, there is money that EPA has said to the states, here's a pot of money, you can only use it for PFAS. The way that we distribute that money is called, it's through the State Revolving Fund, SRF. The State Revolving Fund will issue loans to public water systems, usually at some close to market, little bit below interest rate. For PFAS treatment, the SRF is making available 0% interest loans, and if you are in what EPA designates as a disadvantaged community, which is not the same thing as environmental justice, they have their own scale for doing things, it's 0% interest plus 13.2% principal forgiveness. So that money is available for systems who apply for it. It's a competitive process. It's for all kinds of drinking water projects, lead and copper, I can't even think of what else. All the projects in the state that all the water systems are trying to get money for are in this pot of, I can't remember how many hundreds of millions of dollars over the next five years. All the PFAS projects go to the top of the pile. So there's not usually enough money to fund all the projects in the State Revolving Fund, but the PFAS projects get precedence. But wait, there's more. We heard recently from EPA that they are giving Massachusetts $38 million for small systems as grants to fix their PFAS problems. It's not a loan, it's a grant. $38 million is not a lot of money for the whole state. Your problem is not that expensive in the scheme of things. If you need a million, or let's say $2 million, I am advocating with our Boston office who manages these grants, that Millville should get a grant to fix the PFAS. You can't treat the PFAS through the regular way you would treat it, which is actually really simple, even for somebody like me down in Dan, it's granular activated carbon, which is like a really big 20-foot-high Brita filter. And it takes out the PFAS, the PFAS gloms onto the carbon, and you take the carbon away, and you burn it at 1,000 degrees. In order to do that, you're going to have to deal with the total organic carbon that's coming in, because that would foul up the other carbon at the other end of the treatment. And that's an okay thing, because if you design a project for PFAS funding, and it happens to have a fix of fixing all these other things, then you get everything done with the grant money. And I'm not here promising you that you're going to get a grant. I am encouraging that you look into this grant funding, that you talk to engineers who would be able to figure out if you put the PFAS system here at the end, after the green sand, and what do you do with all this total organic carbon? Can you put in treatment for the total organic carbon up front? Take it out, have the nice clean water go through. There's no disinfection byproducts problem because the TOC is not fouling with the chlorine, and then your water's coming out back here at the end, and it's no disinfectant byproducts and no PFAS. And that would be a great place to be. Or you could hire an engineer to tell you, this is a really hard system to operate. Bob already just told you that. It is a tricky, tricky system. You could take a million dollars or $2 million, and you could have an interconnection with Blackstone or maybe Oxbridge. I know, some people may know that North Smithfield is already providing water in Millville in Providence Street neighborhood because of some contamination that came over the line from Rhode Island. That's, in a way, would be a harder project than either Blackstone or Oxbridge, but you would have to get into an agreement with one of those towns. You'd have to have an IMA, you'd have to, it's, again, it's up to the towns. It's the town's problem to figure out. I'm bringing you options, but I can't decide for you. But looking at whether this tiny amount of water that you need would be available from your neighbors either in Blackstone or Oxbridge, and getting that designed into the pot for the grant money is also an option. It's not, it doesn't have to be treatment on your own, it can be an interconnection. And a lot of even towns are saying, I'm out of the water business. One town in our region is getting out of the water business and signing up for the MWR. MWR water is really expensive, but they are like, you know what? We are done running a water system. And that's a whole town. And they're just, they're just saying, we can't. I think, Mike.
Mayor, can you just, on the grant, is that, they have to apply federally for that, or is the money applied through?
They gave it to us to administer. Which is why I've been already bugging the people in Boston, and I, I should check my phone. When is it available? I don't know yet.
So, Madam Chair, if I can interject on how important that comment is, that the director just acknowledged.
So we spoke about this on Friday, and so she said, let me know, Mary, what are your worries about? If you could put aside some funding to investigate this, then we could, I could say this is a real project, and it has some real legs. So I'm prepared to call for that vote. What I'm asking you is, do I need to set aside, would $25,000 be enough for it to be real? How much do I need to set aside?
I think you have the threshold question to decide first, is are you going to invest in the treatment system, or are you going to invest in a water line? And I don't think you can answer that second question without speaking with the other two towns.
Can I just interject on the town piece, though? Is that, I just asked Mr. Keefe, because he's on the Board of Selectmen in Blackstone, sorry. Do you buy that through Windsocket?
By what?
Your water? Do you get your water? You have your own water resource, so, okay.
We have about 10 wells. I also looked at Blackstone's PFAS number, scribbled those on a piece of paper somewhere.
We are in the middle of it.
Blackstone's around two, or three, or four, total, total. Oxbridge, Oxbridge is going to need money too.
Sure, just bring it on.
Yeah. But Oxbridge is going to have to treat. Everybody's going to have to treat. So if you end up buying water from Oxbridge, that will be PFAS-free because Oxbridge is going to need the treatment on also.
I would just, could I strongly make a huge suggestion here to fix this problem? I would get with your friends in Blackstone to figure out if you can get an agreement to get this water line into the system, I think is going to be one of your best options because of the amount of money that they're investing in their filtration system and things like that that they're doing to upgrade. If it was me and this money that I was looking at potentially to get, I think it would be favorable, and Mayor Ju, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you've got to look for the best problem-solving source, the best bank for your buck, I would say. And I, okay, the Senator and I are going to advocate for you whatever you decide to do. But we want to fix the problem. We don't want to just have you invest money and it not fix the problem long term.
No, I totally agree.
So I think the long-term solution would be to get with the folks in Blackstone to figure out the viable option and work your way through that grant process, because the money is there. And I think, I appreciate the Regional Director bringing that to our attention because it's very important.
Yeah, no, I agree.
I'm sorry, I'm checking my messages, and I did not get a response on the timing yet. But I will because I'm bugging people.
But, so could I call for a vote for my to investigate one or the other? Or does it have to be specific? We have to have, do some background work first, and then allocate money for one project or another?
When you come to us, I'm not sure I understand the question, but you come to us, you would be advocating for one or the other. You have a design, and you would say, and it doesn't have to be, like, this is going to happen fast when it happens. But that you are going to do this with Blackstone, and you have an intermunicipal agreement, and it's X, you know, 3,100 gallons a day, does that sound right? That you're going to purchase, and your PFAS levels have been exceeding 10 for all 15 months. PFAS is a problem. You need to keep saying PFAS as many times as you can.
As I can.
So you would have to pick one. I don't think that we can estimate, we are certainly not as familiar with this system as Bob is, you know, what would it take to run that line? You'd have to talk to Blackstone, to the superintendent there, because when you move water from one system to another, some communities put in fluoride, and some don't, and some water age problems can creep up if they sit in a dead-end pipe, and maybe there's an elevation change, and you need a pump station, which is going to another half a million dollars probably. So, you know, there's a lot of things to discuss with either Oxbridge or Blackstone to figure out how complicated is one versus the other. But certainly, being a regional school district, you know, that makes sense to, it's my opinion. I mean, it's a great suggestion that Blackstone, but I can't, I can't tell you.
So that would obviously be someone beyond sitting at this table right now to do that type of analysis. I would assume it would be some type of engineer to give Millville that recommendation.
What I want, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I'm a bad introvert, I apologize.
I am too. So is there anything within the realm of that grant, or that keeps it to a public water supply? Or is there, and I'm not trying to put more on the town of Millville, but I know this has been since the 80s, and there have been many other water conversations in our town. Running water from where you're talking about to that school opens up a lot of opportunity for other, so is it, would it be a negative to try to incorporate it into a neighborhood piece, or for fire hydrants and homes to be able to buy from that water supply? Or should they keep it just to the public water source?
So it's a really delicate question, that, I mean, we have a number of systems that are bringing water lines from other towns. Sometimes it has nothing to do with PFAS, it has to do with an oil spill, the contaminated things, and now they have to go buy water from somebody else. And there's always an issue for the town to wrestle with, which is, let's just call it a mile, I have no idea how far it is, but let's just call it a mile. Do you want development along that path of that water line? Because some towns don't want development, and some towns, if it's running through the center of town, and they're looking for, you know, retail, and a Dunkin' Donuts and all, they will be very happy to have a water line. That's going to mean you're buying more water, and the source has to be able to provide more than you're asking for, for the school. So those are tricky issues it's worth thinking about. The longer you think, the faster other people are going to go get the money. So you're, like I said, you're in compliance with the PFAS standard now, and you can wait. You can wait until, you know, I'm not telling you, unlike the disinfection byproducts, which you need to fix, because this is a bad problem. The bigger problem's coming, and the money's here now. You don't have to be exceeding, you just have to have PFAS. So just keep saying.
I think you have a twofold funding. You have the PFAS loan, small loan, and then also the grant piece, if I'm hearing it correctly. So those two can work in conjunction, and it ultimately could solve the overall problem.
Yes.
Which a lot of towns can't do that. It's uniquely, you're in a unique situation.
And it's, lucky is not the right word. It's serendipitous that you have this problem that you have struggled with for a long time, and it's a really difficult problem, and you have this other problem that might allow you to make the changes at the treatment plant to fix it, or to get out of the water business and buy water from somebody else. So there are choices, and there are all these peripheral issues about, is there going to be development along the water line? And how much is it going to cost? Because you're still going to have to pay for water. You're not going to be paying an operator, and paying for chemicals, and paying for electricity, but you're going to have to pay for the water. So all of that has to be taken into account.
Yeah, so just what I, the reason why I keep asking about, like, taking votes, because I want, you and I talked about, like, if I can leave this meeting when they're committed to moving forward. So would it be appropriate for me to ask for a vote for some money, some money for a preliminary study to look at treatment versus connecting to another town? And then that would give you something to go back, like, hey, these people are already starting this?
I know, I have been speaking on your behalf already, so, you know, I don't need something to take to the Boston folks that I've heard yet. I just keep saying Millville Elementary, Millville Elementary, so they know, and they're tired of me saying it already. And, you know, there are four regions, I'm not the only Regional Director advocating. I have other small systems. They're not as tricky as this one. So, and this is, this is small. I know a million or $2 million sounds like a lot, but we had a project just go to town meeting in another town that was $19 million. So in the scheme of things, $38 million doesn't go far, but we're not going to be asking for a lot. So it's, the sooner you have something like that, I don't need it tonight. I would encourage you to get there because you need a pretty good cost estimate to say water line, treatment plant. You're going to need to figure that out because what if you don't ask for enough money?
Yeah, okay. I'm still going to do, I'm going to make a motion that we set aside $25,000 in opera funds to conduct a preliminary study to evaluate treatment versus an interconnection related to this PFAS grant. I'm looking for a second. Any further discussion? Deanna, I'll call for the vote. Richard?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Roland?
Aye.
Andrew?
I'm staying.
And Jennifer is aye. So $25,000, we'll start that with Peter, probably tomorrow. Okay.
If I may, Madam Chair, I think Representative Soto, we talked about this back in 2017, I think 2018, when this issue came up.
I wasn't here in 17, and I wasn't here in 18. So it was 19.
So Blackstone's water line does run up Lincoln Street. Right before Deprada, you see that building. The discussion back then was, there wasn't the funding, and now it seems like there's a possibility of that funding. We're in the middle of an $8.5 million filtration plant, building a new filtration plant in town. If this were to go in front of the Board of Selectmen in Blackstone with the Board of Selectmen in Millville, would we be able to get the DEP support, like, something like this at some point to?
I will come out any night and talk to anybody about PFAS. I have been from the New Hampshire border down to here, talking about PFAS since, I can tell you exactly when, February 14th of 2018, when the town of Hudson had 800 and some parts per trillion of PFAS in its water, when it was the EPA number of 70. And I have not stopped talking about PFAS since 2018.
She recommended that movie Dark Waters, and I watched that, and I also watched as an associated documentary, The Devil That You Know, and they were really scary.
Which is not, and again, fear mongering is, I am not here to scare anybody, I'm entirely...
Our numbers are safe. We're safe, but I don't want us to be unsafe, unsafe with it.
And there are people, these firefighting foams were military specs. So at all of the military bases, you're finding numbers, and in the Cape Fear Basin, especially down in North Carolina, you're finding numbers in the 14,000 parts per trillion range in drinking water supplies for our military families. You know, so it's, all things considered, this one is, this one's not that tough.
Dan, are you asking, when you ask for support, are you asking them to come to the meeting, or funding support?
Both, yeah, any supporting.
PFAS, you could apply for these, Blackstone could apply for it also.
Well, right, because as you know, Blackstone and Millville work so well together over the last 54 years, as we're all sitting here, right?
I would love to work well together.
Yes, and...
This is going to be the perfect opportunity to do that.
Yes.
Yes, but with that being said... Yes, but with that being said, we would need some D P support because I know many Blackstone residents will be, they're not happy about not being able to water their lawn already with the amount we can pump every day.
I can't help you with that.
I know you can't.
No, I mean, I think you want me to, but I'm telling you I can't.
I know you can't, but I have to throw it out there.
Your grass needs to go dormant in the summertime, it's not dead, it's dormant.
No, but in the same respect to that question, if they are the ones that we would be able to tie into, is there any help in the funding to produce more water? Not to water the grass, but to supply.
This town that just got nineteen million dollars in a loan is putting in a brand new well and a solar farm next to it. And oh, by the way, we're going to connect these other eleven public water systems in another town because they have PFAS. So they're getting a new well, they're getting, and that's, that's a loan, nineteen million dollars. But the carrying costs for the twenty or thirty year life of that loan, that they, by getting the zero percent, I think they told me was seven million dollars. On the, that they got.
I guess my question is, does Blackstone have an enterprise fund for their water system?
Yes.
Does Millville have an enterprise fund just in case this happens?
It's just the school.
Just the school. But along the way, this run, is that going to open the opportunity to have other people?
Connected.
Connected.
I guess I wanted, whatever we get, we'll have to see what we get for funding and like, well, that's all the money we'll have to spend. So if we have enough to connect other people and it's open?
People have to pay to connect.
Connect it, that's what I'm asking you.
Buy the water, but it has been a huge conversation and I know Roland, you will remember, but getting fire hydrants up their street. There have been developer after developer that want to develop right past Breathaway and there's, I believe it's still a water issue. A water, a hydrant, fire zoning issue. I might be way years behind.
The reason, the reason I asked you about an enterprise fund is because it's outside of your, you have a lot of control outside of your property tax base to pay for water, hookups, hooking up to the system. If it's going to be running down that street, there could be fifty, depending on how much water can be supplied. And as an agreement, it could, long term, again, like the regional director did say, either you want to be in the water business or you don't. But I think this might open that opportunity up to create that, that I would strongly suggest to create it because I think it's going to help you in the long run if you can make that agreement work.
We create a water commission probably and then if the pipe was going in, you're just, you could at minimum put tees in at each property for future connections, but that would be a little.
So I think there goes on the long-term solution.
We talk about the short-term?
Yes, I would love, that's exactly where I was going. So I guess, so just, it's my, I told, my email, Mary Jude, I'm just going to put my cards on the table. So this is what I think the board is likely to be dealing with. I have an expert telling me that the permanginate system is not adequate. And I have another expert telling me the permanginate system is great. And I don't have a water specialization, chemistry, biology, whatever degree I need, I don't have that. And I have two conflicting opinions. So Mary Jude, I asked you to be the tiebreaker, you said, I don't think you're going to do that. Now, okay, great, that's helpful.
I can't, I can't be a tiebreaker.
I feel compelled.
Can I just, can I just? We've already put in writing in the notice of non-compliance that's dated October twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-two. Because we have looked at this information, we've looked at the test that measures whether there's surface water that infiltrates, we call under the influence, infiltrates into the groundwater well. So what we wrote in this notice of non-compliance saying, you're in violation, you have to give us a plan. As the source was previously determined not to be under the influence of surface water through MPA testing, the dismantling of a nearby beaver dam to reduce the total organic carbon influence in the groundwater would not be deemed an effective solution. So you have DEP's opinion on the beaver dam in writing, which is not to say, don't do it. You can go do it, there's a form on our website. If you give us what information that you cobble together that meets the checkboxes on that form, we give you the determination, you go to the Board of Health, they let you move, whatever, kill the beavers. And then you see what happens, but it's been a problem for ten years. It's not since two thousand and twenty where the beaver dam impoundment and, you know, the TOC skyrocketed since two thousand and twenty. It's just not accurate. So, you know, you can do it, it's not the plan that's acceptable to us, but that doesn't mean you can't also do that. You can do two things, but we want a plan that is going to do something in the interim while you figure this part out so that we can have clean water over here.
May I have a moment?
Sure.
I'd like to give my time to this gentleman.
Yeah, thank you.
Number one, to the Board of Selectmen, I don't know where you're getting your information from, but it's erroneous. I have never said potassium permanginate based system will not work, never. When this system was first conceived in two thousand and ten, it was originally designed to use potassium permanginate. The reason it was, it was changed to sodium hypochlorite is because the then operator came to us and said, they have no experience with permanginate, so can it run with hypochlorite? And we said, sure. And then I said, but you better be careful on disinfection byproducts, okay? Now to address a comment that Mary Jude made was that I've never said the eliminating the beaver pond solves all the world's problems. You still are going to have issues with TOC. It's been that way forever, okay? Or at least since the green sand filtration system was installed, okay? But it's an aggravating factor. And again, we don't need to get into this debate. I'll be glad to write the dissertation that demonstrates it, okay? And everybody keeps something in mind. Relative to the people in this room, there's only one person who's an expert in wells and bedrock and geohydrology. Okay, only one, right? Keep that in mind, all right? And I've done work on hundreds and hundreds of bedrock wells.
Okay, but with all due respect, Bob, you did start at our meeting the other night and said that you would not move forward to the permanginate unless the beavers were gone.
That's correct.
Did say that in our meeting.
Or if you get another well.
Though you may never have said that that would eliminate the problem, but you basically said you're not wanting to put your name on that work.
Yeah.
Unless the beavers are gone.
That is creating a hellacious complication and another massive variable that's going to be very difficult to control, okay? That's what I've been saying all along, I have never wavered, okay? And by the way, I talk to the folks in the river sand too, I've got a thirty-year relationship with them, okay? So, one other thing. It was stated that was fear mongering when I mentioned Flint, Michigan in our meeting a few weeks ago. My comment about Flint was relative to the original basis for us being involved with Millville Elementary School. It was a massive corrosion problem. And it wasn't just lead. You had lead, you were monitoring twenty locations, you had lead all over the place in the school, up to eighty parts per billion. And you had copper in some locations exceeding four parts per million, okay? And it took a year and a half to develop a site-specific solution. And that was the basis of my comparison to Flint. It wasn't fear mongering about what this is going forward.
So why mention, why mention Flint? Are you saying that there's going to be some other corrosion issue or, and then, then don't, then don't mention Flint?
I was giving a history of the, of the system.
I just want people to be clear that there's not a lead and copper issue, there's nothing going on with the corrosion. The issues in Flint were different kinds of issues, but you do have a public health problem. It's not that kind of.
We definitely all already agree with that.
So, so what is the short-term solution? Because we have four, about four hundred kids and adults in that building every day and that I'm very concerned about and I know everybody around this, these tables are concerned about as well. So what is the short-term solution?
Pull them back to Blackstone.
Well, you have a recommendation on the short-term.
I think my recommendation is going to be this, but I think we should move on with the permanginate system. And I think that that's what is recommended and so that's what I would like to move forward with.
And how short-term, Mary Jude, are we talking? Just, they do, they do what they just voted on, they do the research and they bring an application to you. Realistically, when would we be moving to being accepted into a grant and?
That's what I just, I don't know yet. I mean, this is new money from EPA.
The money's already here though, it's not.
We have the money, but we don't have a grant program. This is, this is something that we never had before.
I want to push this even harder because I, I hear everybody, I get it, understand. I know that at this point, the, the discussion was to switch the, we thought that the changeover of the system was happening in April. I reached out the Friday before April break, hadn't heard a peep from anybody, which is what led to all of this frankly, coming to a head. And I'm incredibly grateful that it has. However, what I've learned since is that this, the chemical change in the water is going to happen sometime over the summer. We have five or six weeks of school left and we have another failure in our, in our disinfectant byproduct. And I continue to hear that the water is fine. The water is not fine, the kids are not going to be drinking it. And we also have cooking happening and we have hand washing happening. And I'm not sure if those things should be happening with that water and, or not, or if it just, is just the drinking of that. But we need a short-term solution while you have, you know, starting your, either, whether the chemical change is happening, the research on the system itself.
So the hand washing, hand washing is fine. Washing vegetables is, is fine. Cooking foods that absorb water like rice or pasta, you should probably avoid. You should probably use bottled water for that. It's not as, it's not as significant an exposure as ingesting, actually just drinking water, but it does absorb water. So again, women of childbearing age, that's, that's the problem audience for the DP, the disinfectant byproducts.
So we'd like to go to a bulk water system then, until, and bypass the whole system until you all update it.
Right now, I'm going to call for a vote. And I don't know if this is going to go by, but we can vote, you're on the same way as I'm thinking. I'm going to suggest that we allocate fifteen thousand dollars in our funds as a goodwill gesture towards the school district for water expenses. And I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Roland. And so just upon discussion, the reason I wanted to do that is we do have to have a separate long-term conversation with lawyers and things like that. Because our lawyer does tell us a lot, like, look, you shouldn't pay for this, you shouldn't do that. And I don't do anything the lawyer tells me not to do. Like if he says don't do it, I don't do it. I'm terrified of lawyers, I don't want to go to jail, like I just don't want to get involved. But I thought as a gesture of goodwill, we could offer this money and that would be something to get the school over the hump. And in the meantime, we can have lawyers have a conversation about a long-term finance option where there's more shared equity of the disinfectant byproduct. Because I feel like there's more disagreement on one side of the table than the other and that will be equally disheartening.
So I should not interject myself in your conversations about this, but I think it's important for the town to understand that the bulk water purchase for whatever period of time is not going to get you out of the routine sampling and all of the things that the operator has to continue to do. So it's, unless you were taking the bulk water and putting it in a tank, then that would, but as long as you, you have a system, you have to test your system.
Yep.
So you will maintain that cost, I just want to.
Yep, that's, you will do what you have to do.
Can I just ask a question about PFAS?
Can I just finish my vote?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so any further discussion? See, now I'll call for the vote, Richard.
Aye.
Matthew.
I'm staying.
Roland.
Aye.
Andrew.
One quick question.
Yes.
Where would that leave our research?
So Peter is aye.
Do we have any left?
We have a lot that we have earmarked but haven't used. We had some access and some things that we haven't used.
Do we have any unallocated after this or?
It depends on what you use of what you've earmarked and you have some big chunks that you've earmarked.
So as it stands now, no?
No, right.
Nate?
Jennifer is aye, so the motion passes.
Madam Chair.
So just to clarify, that can you use for bulk water?
That's fifteen thousand dollars for you to spend on water as you need.
So I wanted to get back to my PFAS question just quickly. You mentioned that for cooking, okay? It's okay to use water. So I heard our water is safe because of our PFAS levels now, but it's not going to be safe shortly because the levels are changing, correct? So really, it's not safe now. Because we didn't fix that number, the EPA is choosing that.
EPA is in a public comment period right now and there are people who think the number should be zero. And there are people who think in the thirty-four other states that haven't regulated PFAS, that PFAS is really not a problem. So all of those comments are going to come in from all across the country, the number might not be four. I can tell you DEP's number is going to go lower, I don't know if it's going to be four. So you may, with your average of eleven or thirteen, whatever I said it was, you may continue to be in compliance if DEP changes this year. But I, I'm not sure that EPA is going to be four. And it's just all of that science that goes into factoring in the risk numbers, the dose that you have to have. So the science right now is unsettled. What I can tell you is the regulation is twenty parts per trillion for the six that we regulate. And if it's less than that, town is in compliance. And we've determined that anything below twenty parts per trillion is okay for people to consume, even the sensitive subgroups.
I just think of our three-year-olds, I think of our medically fragile students.
I was just going to ask that question with our preschoolers that oftentimes things go in their mouth. That's my question, is it safe to wash their hands and then put their hands in their mouth? That's, that's my.
It's ingestion. I mean, think about drinking water. So we have questions sometimes that come up with bathtubs, toddlers in bathtubs, swimming. You know, as long as you're not drinking the water, it's not going to be on your hands and get in, it's not going to be on your dishes. You can wash the skin of fruits and vegetables and eat those things. So it's, and this is PFAS, not the disinfectant byproducts.
Same with dishes?
Dishes are fine. And remember, your water's already fine, it's an excellent point. I could be coming back in a year and telling you your water's not fine and oh, by the way, there's no more money. That would be a bad conversation. But there is science now that EPA is relying on to say that the risk is much higher than the old science. It's absolutely right.
I just want to clarify, you asking the question of the PFAS aspect of it, or are you asking the question on the current situation that's a public safety?
I'm just thinking, like, looking at all these things with the hand washing and all that, the, like, okay, fine to do, fine not to do, whatever. I'm just concerned about that.
Right, but PFAS isn't an issue right now.
Right, right now it's not.
Public safety issue is the order that she has in her hands that the engineer, Bob, Bob, I'm sorry, right, Bob, mentioned about the issues that you're having. I guess, I think some of your concerns and questions should be about cooking with that.
The disinfectant byproducts. That's what my question was.
Right, and I think it's the, it's the same thing that we would say because it's similar sensitive groups, is that for the sensitive groups, in particular with the disinfectant byproducts, women of childbearing age, not to drink it, not to cook foods that absorb water. It's the same message. The, the sensitive group for the PFAS is larger. It's also infants, it's also immunocompromised people.
But I do believe with the motion that was just passed for Millville, we're all going to be okay through the end of the school year. Because we had actually already done some math on where that, where we need to be to get to the last day of school, so.
I have a question.
The further short-term would happen in the summer.
And then I will, I will see how that goes and then we can revisit again. So I'm happy to come to meetings, like Erin and I just started talking about this when we had the meeting on the stabilization fund. I don't like to come in, I've been told I can be bossy. So I didn't want to come in and just be like, it wasn't you, it was my husband. So, but I'm happy to come and talk and try to fix things whenever. I just don't want to.
With more than two days notice, I apologize.
No, or I can, it's difficult for two days notice, my kids have something every single day after school. So, and I'm sorry.
It's all right. If we purchase bulk water and fill the storage tank that's on site and use that, shut off the well, does Naughty still have to come in, test the water and do we have to backwash the filtration system?
We would test it, enter the distribution system?
Are you talking about actually inactivating the source at that point?
We're going to buy the water, say, from one socket that's already treated. You'll initially get a test, I would imagine, from the water when it arrives on site.
If, if you were to, if you were to inactivate the source and not use the treatment system, we'd still have analytical done, but it would be a different, it would, we would change. we'd still have analytical done, but it would be a different, it would, we would change the sampling plan based on, based on the new bulk water.
So we wouldn't have to waste water backwashing the filters either.
If, if the treatment systems aren't on, you're not backwashing the filters.
Right. So the testing that's related to the operation of the treatment plant wouldn't be necessary if you inactivate it.
But can the well be off with the fire system? I'm, I don't know.
That's an important question.
Yeah, the well. Yeah.
It does, the other tank though, right?
Right, the other.
As long as the well's on, then.
There's a separate storage tank for the fire system that the fire department maintains the water level in. It's not fed to our pump.
But it doesn't get treated.
It does not get treated.
The, the water coming in from the well comes into the school. There's a branch that take, that then sends water out to top off the 60,000 gallon tank, which is now used only, struck you for fire suppression in the, in the rear of the school. Okay, there's a separate branch that goes to treatment. So you can valve off the branch that would go to treatment. If you can cut it, if you want. Uh, but you, that would still maintain service to the fire tank, which is 60,000 gallons. Because obviously over time, you're going to, it'll be very slow, but you'll have some water losses, there are variable losses. So you want to maintain that tank topped off, okay?
I'll contact Chief Roy because I'm almost positive they come in with a tanker and they top that tank off. They don't use the water.
So, so the, the.
Yeah, they, they have Scott. And that, and that was, they started, I think, practicing that after 2010 when they saw the level of fouling in the, uh, the service line going out there. But it's still, that, that's, that connection is still there and, and active. Okay, so it's there. But again, they come in, they're out, they just top it off. And they've done that in the past, I know they have.
So the, the short answer is based on the change, we would modify the sampling plan. And, you know, my staff would go through it and would just review what, what's happening, where the water's coming from, what's actually still on. It wouldn't affect lead and copper sampling, that would continue. But based on the change that you guys would let us know, we would make, we would make the appropriate change to the sampling.
But that would only be very temporary as well. Because in the summer, when the changeover happens, we go back to the testing.
So for the two months or whatever it is, it might not be, I don't know.
Six months.
It's up to you. And, and everyone should keep in mind that this water line is not coming in overnight. I mean, you're looking at a year and a half, two years to.
Correct.
You've got public bidding to deal with.
Do we need to make a motion to go with the PFA system? Or do you guys not have any other discussion? Do you have any other questions for now?
Time to go over the other options.
Oh, that's fine.
But we don't have another option for the summer piece. Is that what you're talking about?
No, I'm. Well, if you go with the PFA system, we're going to be committing to having a water feeding system. What I'm thinking is, is if there's other options in, in addition to having a water system to go into instead of bulk water, if that would be more sense.
Oh, for the, for like forever? Like bulk water?
We're talking about short-term.
No, so, so we have, through the end of the year, we've authorized the dollars. So Andrew's saying, should we not even do the switch over over the summer? Should we just keep buying water for you? Should we figure out a plan, a division of monies on buying water forever at Millville Elementary School? Until we get.
You're looking at $2,200 for approximately 7,000 gallons. And the school goes to about 2,000, 2,500 per day.
But that's with the flushing, and we won't have to do that anymore. That's with flushing.
Yeah, just for clarification there, without all the uses we, we need for the, the treatment system, you're probably looking at closer to 700 to 1,000 gallons a day, uh, all in for, let's call it domestic and sanitary uses in the school. Okay, so you bring in a 7,000 gallon load, you probably could get more or less, uh, seven days out of it. Okay, which is a little more than a working week for the school.
We went through almost two loads the week prior to February vacation. Now, I'm not sure if they were still backwashing at that time.
Yeah, we were definitely doing some. Because we're prepping for the, uh, the work on the filters.
Yeah, but we can look at that, Andrew. I think that's a good question. Should we just get not use water at the school at all and buy water? Or should we look at, I think that's a great suggestion, Andrew. We'll not take any votes on that.
But you also got to keep in mind, you don't know how quickly that grant's going to come through and if Blackstone is going to approve you to buy the water and.
Dan is my new best friend and he already said it's okay. So.
Dan, you speak for the town of Blackstone now?
He's only one, he's only one of five, one of five.
Just to recap though, so, so very short-term, you.
Will need to figure it out.
Made the $15,000 appropriation to cover water, definitely through the end of the school year.
Water tomorrow.
We are not 100% on the changeover for the summer. And you are, you appropriated money to work towards.
A long, long.
The long-term.
Yeah.
Possibilities of the $38 million that is available and we should do that very quickly.
Yes, so we're.
Should we set, because you, you said you'll come anytime. Should we set some, you know, monthly check-ins for the summer? Like, where do we, how much time do you think we need to make sure we don't lose too much time now? If we're going to walk out of here tonight and not have a plan for the summer, for the changeover in the summer, like, we need to know what that building's going to look like for August 28th. Is it used in the summer?
Yeah, well.
Summers?
We're meeting our kids this summer for other reasons, but.
So I think we have two more second meetings in June. So the first one will be to talk about and try to make a decision on what we're going to do over the summer, if anything. So those dates, so they're going to be June 5th and then the 19th or 20th. So then, do you have a meeting? So I could potentially, I'm happy if I can give an update after the fifth meeting or after the 20th. And I can maybe let you know, hey, we're still going to do a little bit more research. We're not, I can come and tell you that what we talked about, that there's no decisions. And then after the 20th, hopefully, I would say we need to have a decision by meeting on the 20th. Because if we're doing anything over the summer, we need to give to people who are making votes.
I just, I do want to, I do want to just interject a little bit on ARPA funds, okay? You're getting very, very close to the deadline to use this, utilize this money and use it in time, timely manner.
I have late breaking news on that.
Okay.
Assistant Commissioner for the Water Programs also does PFAS stuff at night. Just saw your message, not sure on the timing of the EPA grant for small disadvantaged PWS is not earlier than the fall. Big guess.
That, I'm talking about their, their ARPA money that they already.
Oh, their ARPA money, okay.
There's, there's, so I keep getting reminded from my federal partners that, you know, they're going to start taking a very close look at how much you have still available and not allocated. So, and the state is going to have one more bite at the apple with a very small piece of the pie that's still left. And where they're going to be restricting us to where we spend that money based on the money that districts have. So if the school department's already used their ARPA money up and allocated it, any monies that I might receive are probably going to go in this direction versus your direction or Blackstone's direction. So.
Our money spent.
duly noted, duly noted. So I just want to, if you're going to allocate using money to, you know, for your June 20th decisions moving forward, I would, if you're going to pay for that out of ARPA for the storage as was recommended, I would strongly, that would be a use.
Yeah.
You know, that's one of the big ARPA spending assets that you have available to you. So if you're going to, so it doesn't hit the taxpayer, it comes out of the ARPA money.
Yeah, so we have allocated all our ARPA funds. Actually, this, I think we just allocated our last $15,000. So everything's allocated. And like the biggest expenses, we're looking at redoing the town hall, the old town hall so we can open that again. And that, that project is in process.
So I just, I just want to be very clear on that because it's.
Thank you.
We're going to be very stuck on, they're going to be very stuck on making sure we're going to be reaching out to each town and each school district to say, what is, the Senator and I will find out what's allocated, what you have left, what you have available so that when we go disperse this money, we can fight for a piece of the pie. There's not a lot of it left, only like $1 billion, but that's small in comparison. But we got to spend that still in the same amount of time, so.
It sounds like they've allocated all of it.
They've allocated everything and spending it in the process.
Not promising, like, like I said, I'm not promising. But it's just, it, it doesn't help with, if there's still money out there, so I just want to.
So Jen, we have a meeting June 8th.
Okay.
Would you like me to attend your fifth and you attend our eighth? Or do you just go to the eighth?
It's fun.
It's fun. I was, I was there a few weeks ago and I kept, every time I put a chair up for someone, I ended up in the back hallway. But it was.
I know, people have been attending lately. Usually I'm like public forum and there's no one there. It's a little embarrassing.
So we'll say, we'll.
Sure.
Get an update by June. Is that?
So if you, well, if you attend our meeting on the fifth, you'll know that it was just discussion and no decision was made. But if a decision is made, then I'll come here and report on that.
Okay, so I'll attend on the fifth, I'll know for Tuesday to put it on the agenda or not.
Yeah, perfect. That sounds great.
So just, you know, I, I feel like we have a plan. Does, is there anyone else that has questions about what the plan looks like right at this moment? Or questions, concerns with anything that was shared today?
We have questions that we don't need to answer here, but this corrective action plan that we required and the new notice of noncompliance that you're getting.
So is there a due date on that?
We need, we need your modified plan. Because the plan that we had is not involving bulk water. So we needed, we needed interim and long-term and it's, it's shifting now.
Yeah.
So you need to go back and look at the response to the October N O N. So why don't you think about that? In the meantime, we will get the April notice of noncompliance ready and ask you to submit a plan that is reflective of the decisions that you've made and maybe making in the next, you know, three or four weeks. So it's accurate.
So you have the plan up until the end of the school year, which is bulk water and then the plan for the end of the school year through, yeah, 2025, when they get that.
We'll talk, like, you don't have to submit it and then we're going to rewrite it for you. And I'll just, you know, we can talk about what it should say and then make sure that it's right. And then we'll approve the plan, assuming it's consistent with what you've done.
I just have, I just have one last question as the principal. I'm not supposed to be signing those anymore, those notices anymore, right? They go to the town, the town's ending.
The town is within its, the town needs to have some sort of written promise that you did this. There are boxes that you, that you checked.
That I check off.
But it's signed on behalf of the water system, so it should be the town of Millville.
You're still doing it all.
Yeah, it's the signature of the owner slash operator.
Yeah.
And in the public notice itself, it has a point of contact. It should not be someone at the school. The point of contact should be someone in the town. So that needs to be tidied up.
Sounds like Dr. Gull agrees. I appreciate that clarification.
And I just, I just also texted the Congressman to ask him if I could have a conversation with him in the next couple of days to see if there's Congressman on the class to see if we can discuss this.
I think a lot of progress has been made. And I think we should all be able to sleep a little better tonight, knowing that we have a plan in place, so.
Madam, I, I'm not that comfortable because it sounds like we got like a five-week plan until the kids are out of school. You know, it, it, we have two water, separate water professionals, both hired by the town of Millville that can't agree on a water system. Um, I know a lot of people in this room spent a lot of time trying to regionalize these grades. We have, what, three-year-olds through six-year-olds in this building? You know, the water's safe as long as you're not a woman of childbearing age or, you know, young children. I am, and I, with all due respect, a $15,000 goodwill gesture, I'm not buying that when we had to pay for water during February vacation. And you got the town administrator of Millville saying, we're not paying you back in emails, so. And, and maybe as part of, you know, my experience on the board of selectmen in Blackstone, but we, I don't think we send a bill to the complex for the water that's treated in our town, treated much better than the water in this, in our, in our partner's town. So I am not comfortable. Um, I'm glad that we all met. We have a community, our neighboring community, that is paying two consultants to disagree with each, with each other. And the district and the students and the faculty are paying the price. So I hope we can move forward on this with more than a five-week or six-week resolution. Maybe this is a start, but I, I just, I, Chuck may have had an idea earlier. We are spending and investing a lot of money in our community for safe, clean drinking water. And that means you can wash your hands and you can drink it out of the faucet. So I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
And I'm just going to reiterate what I shared at our last meeting, which is, Dr. DeFalco is the first superintendent that came in five years ago and shut the water off. There has not been any drinking of that. There's definitely washing and cooking, but we have a plan for that right now. We have a plan for, for the washing of the hands and the cooking. And I don't think anyone's going to leave here tonight and say, I'm not doing that again. We all recognize there's a problem. And it, and unfortunately, part of it is, is a financial issue. But the water is not being consumed in that building for five years. My kids started in that building in 2007 and they brought a water bottle every day and the water got turned on and it got turned off. And it got turned on and it got turned off. And my father said to me, Erin, don't ever let the kids drink that water. But the water was on all the years they were there. It was not turned off until Jason was here and came in July. And in September, we got our first notice and he said, I'm not doing this. And I was here the day he said it and it has never been turned back on. Am I wrong, Mrs. Schaefer?
Sorry.
Because, and, and he, I, that is why I'm okay with the kids being there, the staff being there. The year, the years in the eighties and nineties, none of us can speak for. But in the last five years, there has been no consumption of that, of the water. And I think one of the problems is that Millville knows they're paying for that water to be drinkable and we're not letting it happen. So that is another conflict, but Chuck.
It's my opinion that at this point, this is totally unacceptable to have our kids in that school. And our schools are at half-capacity. We have room to tab all the kids in the Blackstone school until you get that problem resolved. I, I'm not okay with saying, you know, my kids went, you know, they haven't caught anything yet or gotten sick or developed something. We shouldn't be taking that chance at this point. Let them finish the school year in Millville. Plan on September, they come back to Blackstone, work on your plan to get the water line to the school, whether it's from Oxbridge or Blackstone.
In my experience with construction, because I am in it for 40 years and I do a lot of public work and private work. And a project like bringing a water line from Blackstone only a mile and a half, two miles away is a mile, is a year and a half to two years. It doesn't happen at the snap of a finger.
Saying.
I'm just telling you.
To Blackstone and you guys can.
And Chuck, that is definitely, you know.
And I really don't appreciate mudslinging that Millville's not doing anything because I was selectman from 2009 to 2018.
You're not that inclined on mudslinging.
Well, I hear a few things that Millville refuses because I watched the YouTube meeting. I worked with Bob for nine years, hand in hand, the board of selectmen and him doing everything possible to get that water where, where it needs to be. And unfortunately, the Creator made the earth and the earth is producing the bad, the bad water.
Here we are.
And we're doing everything we can, we always have. And since 2009 that I've been involved, and we've always done everything possible for the kids.
Yes.
And the, and the teachers and the faculty.
And, and I, I know, I know what you're saying, Chuck, and I, I know what you're saying, Dan. But I do know that everyone just sat here in good faith and we all want to be in a better place. We have a commitment from Millville right now. They're going, there's, we're getting new water tomorrow. Jason already has a contact. Because we did pay that bill, we can call them and get that water right away. We have a commitment from the selectmen for their June 5th meeting. It's going to be a conversation. We're meeting on June 8th. We have time to make changes if we need to. We can move our kids at any time in an emergency in our regional agreement. We're definitely not there yet. That is very disruptive to say tomorrow, they're not going to that building. That is very disruptive to say tomorrow they're not going to that building.
I didn't say that.
No, I'm just letting you know, that we have time. If we need to do that by school opening in August, we as a committee still have room to do that. But I think that we're leaving here with a commitment from Millville, that they're going to, the, the short-term is fixed. They're going to have the second short-term plan for us, and then we're working on, that we already have their commitment for their long-term. And, and if we need the kids moved during that time while the construction is happening,